Cool, 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 cool.
We're cool people and we host this very cool podcast for our cool audience.
Kia ora guys and welcome to this week's episode of the wholesome half hour. We don't have a guest this week. We have for the past few.
Yeah.
We have quite frequently recently, but we're back to basics. Wasn't in the budget for another person this week. Kidding. But as always, I am Mackenzie.
Imagine if we cut the budget even more than we go.
Just one of us speaking through camera the entire time, like, and we still treated it like a talk show.
Yeah.
We're just like.
Hi Sarah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Back to like the old days when you were the one filming and it was like men well.
Oh, g'day. Hey guys, how's it going?
And it's actually still just you filming.
Maybe we should get a sidekick that like checks in cones off camera.
Is that you just trying to like pitch having an assistant?
Your words not that.
Alright, interesting. Um, so in this week's episode, we're gonna be talking about mocks. So obviously it is a big thing right now. You may have sat them, you might be going in to sit them, uh, you might be cursed enough to go to one of those weird ass skills that, excuse my French, uh, you can bleep that out, right?
I think that's acceptable.
Alright, um, one of those weird skills that does their mocks in term four, um, if so, my condolences. But uh, either way, mocks are on everyone's minds at the moment. It is the kind of warm up to final exams. I think it's that time of the year that we start to realise that we didn't do quite as much work as we maybe had initially intended or um, that we haven't quite been able to uh, stick to that schedule that we told ourselves that we would. I thi- I think it's that time of the year that we kind of start to realise like, I'm now.
There's, there's work to be done.
There is work to be done and I have not done it.
Yep. And if you're like me and you're thirteen, you make the mistake of doing it. Don't do that.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, it's, it's one of those things where like, yeah, you need to like, you need to tame the beast early.
Yeah, I think for me, what, what was most difficult for me um, was finding the motivation to do your exams when you already had your endorsement. So I was one of those like annoying kids who had their endorsements before they went into externals every year.
One of those people.
I knew my, like, I played a year-long strategy when it came to N C E A though, because I suck at externals. I sucked at externals. I hate them personally. Um.
I only have one uni exam this year.
That's very good.
Oh, this trimester.
That is very good.
I'm very happy about that.
Um, yeah, but like ex- externals, well, the thing is uni exams I'm fine with. It, it, it was literally just N C E A. It was the way that they tested it. It was just, you know, not clear or good. Well, at least in the subjects I took, but that's obviously not a universal. Um.
You're the only person in the world, we can't see.
I am the only person in my world. You're just an NPC. So yeah, no, the, the way that I did it is I always worked to get my endorsements before externals.
Yep.
Because I knew I wasn't good at externals. So.
Good try.
Yeah, yeah. So I literally just played to my strengths and I knew what my strengths were. And it kind of did make the year a bit stressful though, because it felt like every.
Every internal.
Every hand in was critical. Yeah, 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 yeah. Um, so, but that was good because I think it motivated me to make sure that for each individual internal that I did do well in it.
Provided it's like a balanced level of stress. There's nothing wrong with that. Yeah.
Well, my thing was I, I kept quite close like net with it. Like I would calculate at the beginning of the year, how many credits I could get internally, which subjects they were for.
Get all spreadsheet.
And no, I didn't do a spreadsheet. I'm, I'm old fashioned. We know that. I write things down, probably. And I even, I even went so far as to like look at the internals that I was sitting and banking on which ones I could get excellence on like pretty confidently. Or like if I knew what teacher it was, I was like, I know that, I know that this teacher is, I was actually very lucky in high school. I think I had really, really good teachers.
Yep.
Like, I don't think I had any teacher in like my final years of high school that I did not like. Which I think is quite rare, actually.
I think I might be the same. Last three years, I can't think of, uh, there's a couple, but for the most part, I had like ninety percent like pretty good teachers.
Yeah, but the thing is, like, obviously because I am a tutor as well.
Yeah.
The more that I work with, you know, a wider range of students, I think the more I realised that that was quite lucky.
Yeah, most people will have at, at least one teacher every year that they don't get along with.
Yeah, do what I do, drop the entire subject. Ha ha. Um, don't do that. I do that between years, so it's fine. Um. But yeah, so mocks, mock, mock season is unreliable for a lot of reasons. Kind of unduly stressful, sometimes duly stressful.
Yeah, it de- depends where you sit on the scale, right? Like, like you, you shouldn't be like ultra stressed about mocks, like they are, they are practising, we'll call them what schools call them, because in this context, it's kind of a useful term. They are practising exams. It's like a good opportunity to try it out.
Yeah.
Get a feel for it. Do your best effort. Put your best effort forward rather than like not trying to put any effort, but also not stressing out like it's actual exams, because it's not.
Yeah.
I wanted to be very expressive there.
Yes. No, no, it was good. I, I fully agree with you. I think if you are someone that is prone to worry and if you are worried about mocks, then you probably don't have something to be worried about. It, it's like one of those dynamics of, if you're worried that you are not a nice person, you're probably a nice person because you're actually aware of it. If you just assume that it's going to be fine or you don't care, um, you, you might be okay, but you actually have no clue because you haven't engaged with that thought any further than like apathy. I think it is important to actually see where you sit in that spectrum of how much are you caring about mocks? How much do you think you actually should be caring about mocks? And you may need to care more, you may need to care a little bit less, but for each person, it's going to be slightly differently, different, sorry, right? And I think with that as well, it's also about how you use your mocks. So mocks are flawed for a variety of reasons. Um.
I'm gonna close a door, but you keep talking.
Fair. Um, so the way the mocks are done is there are about three options. So you'll have either written by somebody else, um, by like a company outside of uh, your school. They could be written in school or they could use like a previous exam paper from like a different year. All three of these are like viable options, but each of them have their own flaws. So a mock that's done by a company that's not N C E A is probably the worst option in my opinion. And this is based off working with a lot of different students who have done a lot of different mocks that come from a lot of different schools. The reason for that is they don't use the same language as N C E A does quite frequently. Maybe I'm overblowing this a little bit, but every time I have looked over a mock from a, like a private company, they just never quite hit the mark in terms of formatting, language, difficulty, like the scaling of the questions isn't very good, I've found. So that one's hard because it doesn't give you a super realistic idea.
There's a lot with the sciences, right?
Yeah. Um, I personally don't think they are super close to the way an N C E A exam will actually play out. They will be similar and it will be similar content, like don't get me wrong. But I think it's the, the kind of nitty gritty, like wording, phrasing, grading sometimes as well. I find in those kind of papers, they don't like to give out partial marks as much. They, um, it's either like you're right or you're wrong. And I found that for like some of my students, they've looked over there, uh, we can't take it anywhere.
Continue.
Alright. You done being the worst child? Where are you putting it? Oh my god.
Well, deal with that one.
That is some chaotic energy right there. Um. Whoa, I'm just gonna, um, but yeah, so I think for that, for that reason, it's not that great. Previous exam paper, obviously that's really, really good in terms of formatting and also really, really good if you have looked at it in the past. Ones that are written in school are usually closer to the format, but teachers can talk to with them depending on what they've taught you. So for one year, for example, I don't know why my bio teacher did this. Bless her, I love her, don't get me wrong. But for our end of year mock, for all three of our externals, she slapped them all into one mock, like one test.
Yeah.
That was so big that nobody can complete it. And so I was one of the few students in the class that got excellence on that mock. I didn't get it in the externals, so don't worry, that's not a flex. The reason that I actually got that mark was not because I answered the questions too excellent.
Well catered.
It was because I, I'm, I'm a fast test taker.
Yeah.
Like I will, and so it wasn't that I got quality of points, it's that I got quantity of points compared to other people. So I was one of the few people that got excellence simply because I was able to answer more of the paper than most people.
Yeah.
So it's not a good, like, that's not a good show of how much you actually understand something. That's just like literally how fast can you write.
Speaking of getting thrown in an tie exam, mocks are probably a good idea to try, toy a bit and like kind of do like after each exam, like do a bit of like analysis on like time management, like was I rushing for time at the end? Was I well paced? Could I have spent a little bit more time like just at the end, like right at the end of the exam, like not two days later, like right at the end of the exam, have a think, like how did your time management go? What would you tweak? Doing the past papers, Mackenzie mentioned this, but doing past papers is like a really good idea. Um, I know at my school, like a couple of subjects, straight up used past papers, like word for word or like mixed last year, like two years worth of papers up for mocks. So if you do the past papers, you're probably gonna be at an advantage. Um, yeah.
Yeah, for sure. Um.
I feel attacked.
Yeah.
This is workplace bullying.
I don't care. Oh god. It autocorrected your name so badly.
Interesting. Sarin gas.
Sedan.
Oh yeah. Sarin gas, the poisonous gas is like a kind of auto-correction. I like that. Makes me feel more energy. My boss always says like sarin, like sharing a steak, which is I think the best, the best one though.
Are you saying that because he watches us?
Oh, right. Much more wholesome to share a steak than um, use a toxic gas.
Fair, fair, fair.
Yeah. Um, but yeah, so I guess a lot of people around this time of year are either just about to sick mocks or just about to get their results back. So I guess like, what, like how, what do you think is like a good way to like look at, so like, I guess if you get your mock results, I guess we can kind of break it down into like three cans, like.
Yeah.
Better than expected, as good as expected, worse than expected. Better than expected, good, uh, don't lull yourself into a false sense of security. Like, yeah, you're still like, you're not going to test, A, some, sometimes mocks will be easier than the actual exam. Like that is a thing, depending on the paper you get, wide variety variables. And yeah, remember that like in November, like if you don't do any study between now and November, you're gonna forget stuff. Like at the moment, you've been in class, you've been like learning stuff like regularly.
Yeah.
There's content that you'll sit in November that you may have learned in like April. And like you're gonna need a reminder sometime between now and then.
Yeah.
If they were as good as you expected, yeah, kind of same thing. I guess what, what's the best thing to do if your mocks are not as good as you expected?
I think.
There's a few approaches to this.
Yeah, I, I, I think the first thing is dealing with that emotional component of it. I think that is the most urgent thing. In terms of making sure that you come out of it as constructively as possible. The reason for that is if you are upset, um, which is understandable, especially if it isn't what you were hoping for or what you feel that you deserved. I think the first, yeah, that, that, that first thing is getting over that disappointment, getting over that potential anger or frustration or whatever it is that you may be feeling. And in doing that, I think one of the first things is to kind of take stock and think, you know, is this, um, like, did, did I feel like I deserved this grade? Looking back over your mock, why did I get the mark that I did? What are the areas I didn't do well in? Because I think quite frequently we can fool ourselves into thinking that we know a lot more than we do or not as much as we do. And then like when you actually look over what you did, you can see and maybe think, oh, it wasn't my teacher. Maybe it was me. Maybe I do need to improve in this area of my standard or whatever it is that may be. I think the first thing is, and I think it's one of the hardest parts because we don't want to. We wanna be angry, we wanna be upset, we wanna be like frustrated about it. Um, and we kind of wanna wallow. And I think we just have to get through that, just treat it as much of a process or as methodically as possible, because at the end of the day, the N C A system doesn't care how you feel. You're the one who's in control of the way that you feel about this. And um, in the same way that your teachers aren't going to, what is he doing?
They're changing the light bulbs. That's why they were making so much noise. That's why I like left to close the door because there's so much noise coming from the other.
I think I just like interrupted that.
Yeah, sorry about that. It's okay. We'll continue now.
No, 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 I interrupted their.
The light bulb changing.
Yeah. Did I? Did you see my post?
Not yet.
Oh, that's weird. Oh my god, did I post it to my personal?
Uh, maybe you did.
Oh my god.
You can just save it and repost it, but.
No, it's here.
Oh my god. Random.
Okay, I don't know. Anyway.
Regret a lot.
I thought, I, yeah, that is the first thing. I think.
We're very easily distracted, eh?
My students know that. Um, I think the second thing is treating it as constructively as possible. What is it that I can do better? What is it that I need to improve on? Because like I said before, N C A doesn't care how you feel, Bea. They're gonna give you a grade, they're gonna give you a letter and they don't care about you. They don't care about everything else that you've got going on in your life. They don't care if you've had a really stressful day. They're gonna see your exam, they're gonna see that mark. But in saying that, you should also take that into account when you look at your grades. Did you have a bad day? Did something happen? Is there a reason why you maybe didn't perform as well as you could have?
And if it's that you haven't prepared, like, that's, that's a reason, like what can you do, what can you do about that?
A hundred percent. I think.
You've got, you've got over two, you've, yeah, you've got over two months till your first exam. You've got over sixty days, seven, over seventy days before you like walk into an external.
Yeah.
What can you do between now and then to change that result?
Yeah, and I think it is just about putting on those big boy pants for a second, big girl pants, whatever it is, your gender neutral pants, like just look at what you need to do, get over that part of you that just wants to like run away from it, like just think, I can do that later. I can, I can run and hide from it later. I can do that later, but for now, I just need to know what I need to know or I need to be able to fairly look over what I have done. And then just turning it into as constructive a process as possible.
Yeah, like what sort of plan can I make?
Yeah.
Can I get a study time track mark? We don't have track mark, but can I get a study time study planner? Study time dot com, that's a store. Um, can I like plan out my, the rest of my year? How can I do that? Can I like start making small steps now? So when I get to November, I'm a lot more confident and I don't have to do a ton of work in two weeks. I have done like a small amount of work for two months.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I, it's, it's hard, I think, and this is a super stressful time and I think it's difficult because around this most stressful time of the year, you also have to have the most productivity. And that's like two very difficult things, right?
Yeah.
You all good?
Yeah, my, my girlfriend's sick, which is.
Oh, R I P.
Not good.
Well, I mean, I hope she's not dead, but like.
Oh, who knows?
Oh god.
Yeah, that's, that's tough.
Oh my god, alright, okay.
You know.
Yeah, I haven't got any of the light bulb stories, like at all.
Whoo.
I don't know. I don't care. I don't know. Okay, I'm looking at the, we asked you on Instagram earlier today, actually, um, how you're sort of feeling about mocks and stuff so far. So while not everything here is, I think, like super constructive or anything like that, but I think it's a nice sort of cathartic session to maybe hear about what some other students have been doing, uh, maybe how they've been coping or not. So, um, I mean, obviously it's uh, not overly positive as a result. The question was, how have.
How, how are you co-?
How are you coping with mocks? Something like that? Oh, I could just cheer, you know? Have you been coping with mocks this year?
Yeah.
So, um, like some people were talking about like horrible, I haven't even started them yet and I'm already dreading it. So, you know, in situations like that, it's probably a good time to like take stock and be awfully practical with yourself in thinking about, you know.
If you're strategic, like you can work your way to an achieved and m- most standards in like one or two study sessions.
Yeah.
Like if you're really strategic, like get the walkthrough guide, like don't try to memorise like the thirty pages, just pick like the core concepts.
Yeah.
Ten concepts and just try and memorise like a phrase or like one thing to do with it. That will usually be enough to get you achieved.
I, I, yeah, a hundred percent. So in, in terms of if you're gonna think about strategically studying, you shouldn't be thinking about this too much yet because you do have the time unless you are thinking about mocks. But for the final exams, if, if you are getting super close to the end of the year, it is in your best interest to get a breadth rather than like a depth of content. And what I mean by that is, um, every N C A exam is gonna have three to four questions. So those three to four questions will be, um, those three to four questions will be on like sort of one main area of each topic. So what you want to do is get sort of at least an achieved understanding of each of those concepts. And the reason for that is that when you are getting marked, you are much better off getting like three achieves across your questions than like one excellence and two not achieves.
Yeah. Level one genetics, contents page, study style and study guide.
Yeah.
Cells and DNA one, mutations two, determining phenotypes and genotypes three, variation four. I do two of those per session, that's two study sessions, that will probably get you to achieve.
At least for your mocks.
At least for your mocks. And then you can from there work forward and try push for that merit, that excellence.
Yeah, and, and the, the difference in like the levels and stuff like that is quite interesting and it does depend on the topic. Like I know English, for example, the difference between an achieved and an excellence is literally your own thoughts about something, your own analysis of something. It's got nothing to do with, unless you're getting to later levels and stuff like that. But if we take level one, for example, you're gonna have three body paragraphs, you're gonna have at least one piece of evidence in each of those paragraphs. That is a stock standard. The thing that gets you merit or excellence is the analysis part of that, right? So, you know, if you are wanting to focus on like just getting through at least this mock season, then think about what do I need to do to just get through? It's not in your best interest learning the intricacies of nucleotides and how many hydrogen bonds there are between, uh, you know, guanine and cytosine and if we're just talking about genetics. Um, that's not in your best interests. What is in your best interest is to gain like sort of maybe a basic understanding of everything.
Yeah, and like, so and like with English, like also when you're, you're reaching for those like excellence and you're putting in that sort of analysis, not forgetting the basic stuffs either, like in English, when you're writing your essay, structure is important.
And answer both parts of the question. I cannot stress that enough.
Answer the question in each of your parag- have, yeah, have an introduction in each of your paragraphs. Have a topic sentence, have an explanation, have an example, whatever. Make sure it's really clear. And then like integrate those complex ideas too, but like don't forget about that structure. Essays that are hard to read even with good content are likely to get marked well. If it doesn't, if it's not clear to the examiner what you're talking about, make it really well structured.
Yep, a hundred percent agree. And.
I just hate reading.
Actually, that's a content idea right now. Like, can, can we just get this on record is like basics of certain types of exams, like for history and English and stuff like that. If you don't answer both parts of the question, you are not getting anything more than an achieved. You're lucky if you can get an achieved. You can write something up to excellence, but if you don't connect that second part of the question, it's totally canned.
Yeah.
And these are like weird kind of marking criteria, some would argue. Sometimes it's justified, sometimes it's less so. So maybe if we did like a, here's some weird tips for English. Answer both parts of the question.
It's like the Mets equivalent of like doing the Mets but not answering the question, like if it's like, like how many jelly beans did Jono have, like? You're gonna say Jono had four about jelly beans, like otherwise, yeah.
Hundred percent, yeah. Yeah, that's, actually, that's probably a good idea for something that we should do later on. Um. People just apparently haven't been coping with mocks. Um, someone asked, can you please say, make some history tutorials, like walkthrough guides and stuff like that? Or walkthrough guides, strategy videos. Um, we are thinking of doing or broadening to some of the more niche, oh, uh, history isn't that niche. A lot of students take it, it's a very high demand.
The non-ultra core subjects.
Yeah, they're, they're like non-mandatories.
Yeah.
And I, we, we do wanna do, um, some of that this year. Not a hundred percent sure what it's going to look like just yet, but we are planning on doing some content for, um, you know, the wider humanities subjects and, um, a lot of that kind of stuff. Cause there is definitely a demand for it, yeah. Um. Probability, ratios and proportions. Not great. Oh, I'm sorry to hear that.
Ratios and proportions.
Rations and proportions, like, yeah, yeah, I know the inverse proportions are weird. I don't.
What's a proportion?
It's just like a rate of growth.
Okay, okay.
Essentially. Um, don't ask me any more questions about it though, because that is literally my understanding of it. I don't even have time to think about mocks with all the internals on. Yikes. That is very fair as well. And I think that is also something you should take into consideration when you are going into these mocks is when I was talking about, you know, did you have a bad day? Did something else, was, did you have something else on? When it comes to final exams, that's all you have on. That's your final exams. Like you dedicate your time to preparing for those. At the moment for mocks, you don't have that kind of time. You aren't given a week of study. You are not given, you know, heaps of stuff. You have other things that you're still juggling, along with things like extracurriculars. I know this is around the time that a lot of schools do productions and stuff like that.
It is, eh, it's the, it's the drama season.
And this is incredibly time intensive. And I think you, when, when you think about how you did or your performance or even like how, how you are feeling going into it, you need to take those things into account. Like you need to think about, you know, how, how easy has it been for me to prepare for this? And you should think about that when you go to beat yourself up about grades or something like that, because you have to be realistic with yourself and you're not omnipotent. You're not, you don't have as many hours in a day as you want. Like it's just not viable sometimes to, you know, spend as much time doing something as you want. It's just an unfortunate fact of life, sorry. Um. Someone's pretending that they don't exist. Uh, let me know how that goes. Sassy to Sasquatch. Oh my god, someone's just watching Big Leers instead of, uh, instead of studying. Um, not the best option, but humorous nonetheless. Was on track for mocks and told to learn more externals, now I'm stress day F. That's difficult. Um, in terms of externals, I think it's funny because some schools will let you entirely pick which externals you wanna take. And some schools will force it on you. I know my school was one of those schools.
What about us on the bonus episode? I have an idea of that next week.
Okay, so I'm not gonna talk about that anymore. Make mental note of that so I can go on that rant later. They're way harder than I thought they were going to be. A lot of people have said that. Um. And what I would re- really recommend doing is if you had a mock that you thought was really difficult, go on the N C Q A website and have a look at the previous year's exam and compare that to how you remember your mock being. Because that.
Usually you get your, do most schools give your mock scripts back?
They will not because, I don't know, it's like a legal thing. I don't know. Uh, a lot of students like take photos. I don't know if your teachers are like okay with you doing that, but if you do wanna look back at them later, like just take photos.
Oh, because they have, yeah, okay, right.
Yeah.
They have to reproduce it.
Yeah. Um.
If you get a revived grade, they need the mark.
Yeah. Yeah, someone's like, our mocks aren't until next term, have to study your holidays. That is gen- like I could not think of something stupider that a school could do than putting mocks in term four.
Is a pretty interesting.
Like what was your thought process when you decided that?
I think it's just like, oh, we have to do these, like, let's just shove them here.
There are some schools that just refuse to do them, that just don't do them. That's weird. That's weird as well.
So weird.
Yeah. Someone said, exercise and eating healthy keeps me from getting stressy or depressy and.
Very cool. I endorse that.
Yeah, stel V, stelly V.
Get that thirty minutes of movement every day. Get those ten thousand steps.
You're killing it and I appreciate that. Hell yeah. They start in less than two weeks and half of my teachers haven't even started revision. Now that is part of it as well, is sometimes teachers don't have enough time to actually do it.
To move through the content and then do revision, yeah.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna like just take everyone through a thought experiment here for a moment. So your teachers have a plan at the beginning of the year as to how your year is going to go, how they're gonna conduct your class. But as it always happens, when you're in class, you just get way, 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 way less work done. Even though, let's be real, you're always given enough time, you were given ample time in class to get every assignment that you were given done. Unless your teacher is like really cracking that whip, you have enough time.
Yeah.
And I'm not budging on that one. You can come after me. I don't care. Um. But when you're in a class environment, when you're in a group environment, things slow down. That's just what happens. And so teachers inevitably have to give out extensions. Now it's easier for a teacher to give like a week extension rather than a couple of days. So that's quite frequently what happens. Say you sit five internals throughout the year and your teacher gives you a one week extension for absolutely every one of those. That is now five weeks at the end of the year that you've missed out on, that you could have spent doing other stuff in class.
At the.
But like you and your pals or your classmates, like you can be annoyed that your teacher didn't give you enough time, but quite frequently you are the one that also.
Yeah, a teacher will allocate three weeks of revision at the, like, when they plan at the beginning of the year, they'll allocate three weeks of revision at the end of the year. Ample amount of time, but any sort of, like, any sort of delay from during the year, like that's the time that's gonna be like added into.
Yeah, exactly. It's, it's not that your teacher just thinks, oh, I'm gonna spend one week less teaching you, whatever standard it is that you have coming up next. It's that it eats into your externals.
Yeah.
It eats into the amount of class time that you have for externals, for revision, for whatever it is that.
They're better off teaching, like, they have to get, they, they need to move through all the content before they can spend time like going back and revising all stuff.
Yeah, a hundred percent. So that's more of a motivation thing of like why you shouldn't like mess around in class too much or like ask your teacher for too many extensions, because you're actually the one that ends up paying for it at the end of the year. But I do understand that frustration. Um, and I do also know at the same time that that's not always something that students have control over, like I'm working off the basis that like, it's like a class slowdown. But there are other things that can influence that as well. I'm a hundred percent. Sorry for everyone that had to like listen to that. sorry for everyone that had to like listen to that just then, that was weird, sorry. Someone's just like, I definitely failed my maths one yesterday. Well, my condolences, but I hope that that's not the case. Um, it's hard to find motivation to try if there's only a very slim chance that they're worth credits. So, this is my beef with a lot of grading stuff. And this is more of just like a theoretical framework of how education is. Um, so if anybody doesn't wanna like listen to this, like just momentarily tap out. But the reason that you were at school and the reason that you were learning and the reason that you were getting an education is not to get a grade. It's not to get a credit, it's not to, you know, it's not to get an excellence, like, it's not for any of that kind of stuff. It's to gain knowledge. If I were to ask anyone, if you could tell me the grade for something that you did two or three years ago, you would have no clue, almost no clue. I think the only person that I know who can reliably remember a grade that they got in high school was a mate who got level three unfamiliar text to excellence, just because, how funny is that? Cause nobody does, cause it's unfamiliar text. Like, that is literally the only reason they remembered it.
Yeah.
I could not tell you the grade that I got for almost anything that I said ever.
Yeah.
But I can tell you what I learned, and I can tell you the things that I, and the skills that I gained from that, and that is what is important here.
And being like the skill of being able to learn, being able to learn new content, being able to learn quickly is like, that's a useful skill, like, sure, you might not need to know like how gene sequences work, but if you can teach yourself how gene sequences work, in a couple of years, you'll be able to teach yourself the content you learn, you need, you'll be able to pick up skills of a new job.
Yeah.
Quickly and reliably. And guess what? That gets you places.
Yeah.
Like, if you can learn things quickly, like, like, we, we, we won't even talk about you. If you, if you go, get a job and you can pick up things quickly, and you can learn systems, you can learn, you know, if you, if you go and work at,
It's even just having.
Work instead of retail jobs, you have to know about the product, like, uh, like how it's made, that sort of stuff. If you can pick up all that stuff quickly, that will get you further in that job.
Mm-hmm.
And like you can leverage like high scores and opportunity all in those skills.
Yeah, I think you need to just be a bit selfish when you think about this. When you think about your learning, you have to think about it as your learning, your education. It's a skill that you are giving to yourself, not to appease some sort of institution, not to get some sort of grade, not to get the one thousand dollars that your parents dangled in front of you at the beginning, beginning of the year if you got an excellence endorsement. Like, yeah, I see you. I know that there are kids out there who have.
Yeah, alright.
I, I literally got home the day I got my excellence endorsement. I remember my mom, it, I think it was my level two, I can't remember. Um, I can't remember, but my mom was cleaning out the fridge when I got home that day and I walked in, I was like, hey mom, and she was like, hey, like, how was your day? Like, general mum, daughter chat from school. And I was like, got my excellence endorsement today, and she's like, oh honey, I'm proud of you. She didn't even stick her head out the freezer, like, honestly, like some, like, it's just, I don't know, it's.
It's something she doesn't care.
No, of course, yeah. Liz cares about me, I swear.
I, I don't think that's a, a shame, but worthy of financial rewardment.
I agree.
Yeah.
But I know that that's the way that some people are motivated. That's fine. But what I'm saying here is, is that yes, it's, it's hard to find the motivation to study, one hundred percent. It's, it's difficult to sit yourself down. I felt I'm being very aggressive this episode. I think it's just the vibe of me today. I've been like.
Get some more coffee in you if you want.
I am later, I've got an interview, so, um, but it's not about, it's not about getting a grade, it's not about appeasing someone, it's not about anything like that. It's about you, and it's about you learning for yourself, you gaining skills. And you need to be selfish when you think about that. Another one that I hate is when, um, people like try to compete against each other. Like, your education is yours. It's not measurable against somebody else's in the exact same way that, and I know we've talked about this in previous episodes, that your knowledge about something and my knowledge about something is not comparable, and why would we want to?
Yeah.
We both have an understanding of how to write a video script or something like that.
Yeah.
Do you care who does it better? No, we care that it gets done.
Yeah.
And that is what happens when you are out in the world and you're working with people. It's not about being better than someone else. It's about getting it done.
Yeah.
It's about getting it done to a standard that you're happy with and all that kind of stuff, I think. Like, I don't see the purpose of putting education as a competition, cause it's not.
Writing the longest English essay like doesn't achieve anything, like, if you like come here and you like are told to like write a video script and you write me a script that's ten pages, I'm gonna send it right back at you and be like, format a video, two pages, that's it, like.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
It's, yeah, I thi- I think it's just, you kinda have to move, like, shift your thinking away from just that high school situation. And that's hard to do. It's hard to look outside of your current situation. But it's like thinking a little bit more outwards, thinking, where am I going with this? Why am I doing this? You know? Um, and that can be hard, it's, it's hard, and it's sometimes very confronting, but you usually do come out the other side a bit better off for it. I've gone on some weird tangents today. I think I need to shut up now, but.
I'll have a good tangent. We're doing almost, yeah, we're feeling whether the right time, shall we tie things up?
We probably should. You can tie it up today. I think I've done enough talking in this episode.
I think it's a good time to, you know, be inspired, reflect, drink some nice tea, you know, I'm, I'm into the, the fruit teas and those.
Yeah, mocks are a chance to prepare.
To talk about fruit tea, but that's okay.
I'm so sorry, you can talk about fruit tea in a second. I'm giving one more rant to me. Sorry. It's my turn to cut you off. But, um, yeah, mocks, mocks are a chance to prepare. They are not the be all and end all. And, yeah, they might be your final grades if something happens, and that's scary. Um, and sometimes that's not a lot to hold on to, but you've just gotta think about why you're doing it.
In which case, an achievement's probably like a good thing to aim for.
I wish my mock grades and my external grades were flipped.
Yeah.
Genuinely, I would have done better. I did better in my mocks than I did my final exams, which is weird, cause I did way more study. It was just a form, ah. Anyway, that's fine. We're not going into that trauma.
You know, just chill out.
Yeah, talk about fruit tea.
Reflexed, drink some fruit tea.
I love reflexing.
Reflexed, reflexed. Now, one of my mates like now works at a tea shop and makes me like try different teas. It's fascinating.
Amazing. That's very good.
It's great. Um, yeah, loose leaf tea is superior.
Of course it is.
The way that like whole bean coffee is superior.
Do you know what I love? Do you know what I love? Wait, wait, wait. At the beginning of this year, I was all about tea and you're all about coffee, and we've kinda done.
I'm still mostly about coffee.
I, and I'm still mostly about tea.
Drinking a great Nicaraguan.
We've like
Single origin.
Delved into each other's like beverage.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway, sorry.
Yeah. Uh, here's another thing, just, just so any, everyone knows this, pre-gard coffee is a sin, just, I wanted to give that out.
I don't care.
Um, you should buy, oh, okay, this is the only time I care about, okay, this is way off topic, we'll get this comment in and then we'll. Um, nothing frustrates me more than seeing people who have like, like a expensive, like a eight hundred dollar, one thousand dollar, twelve hundred dollar espresso machine. And they're not using a grinder. You'd be, you'd get much better results with like a cheaper machine and a grinder. Oh, it's really common though. It's like outrageously common. Um, so yeah, coffee grinders.
That's like, is that not like, I don't know, like buying the best gaming system in the world, just to put like a P S one disc in it?
Oh, it's, 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 it's literally the equivalent of like buying like a, like a, like high-end gaming computer and like hooking up to like a C R T from the nineties, like.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It's like, it's literally like doing that.
Yeah, it's like getting a full tower P C just to play solitaire.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, moving right along. Thanks so much for watching.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for watching, guys. Sorry.
Just relax about your mock grades, like, if, if you've had, like, yeah, i- if it's not what you expected or like, even if you're going into mocks, like, just relax a little bit, like, your life isn't gonna be ruined by like one grade.
Yep.
Um, just, just chill out.
And I think.
Use it as an opportunity to improve.
I think this sounds, like, I know this can be tacky and kinda overdone, but I genuinely think that this. Like this, I think this is something that actually helped me, which is why I think it's actually useful despite maybe being a bit tacky, but you have to remember that there is so much more to you than your grades, and you have to remember that there is so much more that to, to you and to your understanding of something than what a test puts in front of you. Um, you know, an exam can't measure a lot of things. It can barely me- measure your knowledge of something, even that's incredibly flawed. So, you know, you kinda just have to treat it like it is a bit of a defective measuring tool, because it is.
Yeah.
And that's kind of it from us this week, I think.
It's the best of all evils.
Yeah.
I'm leaving.
Awesome. Thanks for watching, guys. Uh, next week will be a bit of a shorter ten minute video, uh, so.
About the old void.
The void?
Yeah.
How are you talking about the void?
Exam, exam void.
Ah, I was gonna say, if I need, if we're talking the void, I need more than ten minutes.